Morning, I'm running a little bit late today. Kind of forgot about the meeting. I'll be at a township special meeting heading in right now. Yabba dabba doo. Okay. No, hate it.
Yep, hey, if anybody goes to Richland.
I'll be in Richland, what do you need?
At the RPM, they have your.
I'll stop today.
Okay.
I'm gonna go to the office anyway.
Like to call meeting viewers. Place the flag. Like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I make that motion.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, public comment. This is for agenda items only. And um, time limit is three minutes. Please time me. And. And at thirty seconds, I'll try and remind you.
I'd like, you wanna speak first Dave? Okay, I wanna speak first. Okay, first things first, good morning. Thank you everybody, my name's John Clanchar, I live in Southmont. I do wanna speak about the purchase of police services. One thing I wanna speak about first regarding the agenda is Sue.
Yes.
I'm gonna address you specifically.
I'm working on the timer too.
First, that's what I wanna discuss actually, is the timer.
Okay.
Are you more concerned about the amount of time I'm speaking? Or are you more concerned about what I have to say?
Oh, I've always been concerned about what you have to say. And I don't wanna get interrupted.
So if it might take me three minutes and eighteen seconds, or three minutes and twenty-five seconds, or maybe even four minutes to speak what I have to say. Let's, let's make it, my suggestion to you is make it less about the timer and a little bit more about what I have to speak. Because it's really disrespectful when you're, when you're speaking and somebody interrupts you and goes thirty seconds, okay? You guys are here to represent the people. If somebody has a ten minute concern, it's your business to listen to them. Okay, that's number one. Number two, about the, about the agenda items. I still have ongoing concerns about internal investigations that is going to be happening with West Hills Police. Because now I have two bad cops. Nick Zack, did Nick Zack see you go over to West Hills? Okay, because he is a bad cop. Okay? And I have John Blake, who now we're gonna be, who are now going to be um, um, patrolling my neighborhoods, okay? And as we know, when Paul Peoli was the police commissioner for how many years? He did nothing. In fact, he licked their boots and he went to, he went to appeal hearings. Okay? Um, that's kind of a real problem, you know? Um, I, I, I suggested to the police commission that when, when you guys go on board, okay? That it would be a very good idea for everyone in the commission to put up a uh, to suggest to, put, put a member of this, appoint a citizen member for every municipality. So situations, because I get accused of being a cop hater and I hate bad, I hate cops and I hate all this. And I'm evil and I'm the problem, right? John Blake said to my father, I'm the problem. Okay? But the problem really is, is when, when, when there is a bad cop, and Mistress Grace, there are bad cops here. That you, the insurance company defends, okay? Um, nothing gets done, they're still, they're still out there working. Okay, so if, if you care, and, and I'm not gonna stop coming and talking about the police department and the bad cops that you guys keep employing. Because look, if you go to Wendy's, or you go to Sheetz, or you go to McDonald's and somebody does something wrong to you as a customer, that person is fired. There is, you don't hold the police as accountable as the kid at Wendy's working does. A kid at Wendy's has more, has, will lose his job faster, okay? Than a cop who kicks in somebody's door, okay? Or a cop who tows a truck illegally. Okay, so that's why I have to speak about our agenda items, okay, is, is, is.
You tell them.
Is we need, we need to have.
Thirty seconds.
Something going. We need to have something happening. Okay? When, when the police come on, when you guys come on to, to reform this department. Okay? If you want me, if you guys want me to shut up and you want me to stop coming to meetings and stop criticizing you, look into yourselves at my criticisms. Not at me for being, not for bringing them up, okay? I wouldn't bring them up if it wasn't you guys that did what you did. Like when Ed threw me out, had me arrested for not standing up for the pledge.
Five minutes, John.
Thanks Paul. Oh, by the way, Paul, have you, have you resigned yet since you sold your house? Are you? No? You're just gonna sit there and stonewall me? That's the fucking problem with you people. Is you sit, don't, don't. No, I'm not gonna watch my fucking mouth. Okay? I have the fucking right to use that fucking language. You're gonna come over my, you're gonna, you're gonna box my mom's door? Again, when my dad was bitching? Huh? Fuck you, Dan. Fuck you! Who the fuck do you think you are?
John.
Who the fuck do you think you are?
John Clanchar. Please, I'd like to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you Sue. Appreciate it.
Without, I'm, I'm.
I won't interrupt you at all. I will sit here and listen.
I did not interrupt.
I know you did.
Number one, I do attend to business here. And I appreciate it, I was ready to tell you, thank you very much for actually presenting without using the fuck word. Thank you, but you didn't.
Well, you just used it too, so.
I know, I said it, I'm permitted, it's free speech.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay? But, I'd like you to know that when you want to address internal investigations, you, you will be addressing them through, I'm assuming, the police commission. And when you do all of this work, now in the future, you will address everything as a public, if you wish to be a public member of the police commission, it won't come through us, you actually could either go to Southmont or you could go to the police commission and discuss it. So out of respect to you, I'd like, I understand what you said and I do listen to what you say. But it's important for you to understand, we're here to run business and we wanted to actually move forward on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Can you talk, please, I'm not going to.
I can actually.
And so, I, I keep giving you chances to take care of this stuff. Now, I, I gotta admit, and, and um, Joe, you in the end, you're exempt from this, okay? But, that piece of shit Peoli, that brainless bricklicker Special Ed. Bob, I expect that, well, I got a mirror for you, just in case. If you wanna see what you look like, because obviously if you did, you wouldn't go out in public. Kiss my ass, you piece of shit.
You're off my ass.
Tell him to shut up, he interrupted me. Start the time again. Um, Bob, I expected more out of you. We have, you destroyed a police department in ninety seconds. Let's see, June nineteenth, took two great cops from him out, tried to secretly promote Zack Acacia, who shouldn't be a cop. Oh, by the way, just to let everybody know, Nick didn't make the cut over. Still, I'm so sorry for him on the cinema.
I'm sure about that.
Positive about that, thank you. Um, but I assume Sue, you're gonna point yourself over to the board over there and you'll be on the police commission, because I saw these two clowns and you were over there. So one of you, or two of you is gonna be on there. Number one, you ignored my police complaints. Why do I have six pages of documents, false documents, played created? You did nothing about it for two years. Nothing. By the way, I called nine one one on Saturday. I'll, I'll reveal that next, next Thursday, I'll bring that out. You guys have refused to handle the police department complaints. Ed sits there and talks out of his act, your ass must be jealous, all the shit comes out of your mouth, boy. But I am amazed, I am absolutely amazed. Sue, you, you refuse to do anything about it. And Ed told me one day, you actually said to him, could you take Clanchar and Hill out to a bar and give him a drink or something and shut him up? Oh, no, no.
Excuse me, Sue, is this agenda item we're talking about here?
Okay, well, I'll wait till the rest of it.
Let's get to the agenda.
But listen, I wanna.
Hold on a second, let him speak.
Let's get to the agenda.
Back up one second, Bob, let him speak and then you can gavel him when he's done. You are violating his First Amendment free speech. Let him speak what he has to say and then you can gavel him when he's done, if it's not.
Please, please, please. Either we will adjourn and come back, or we're going to.
Fine!
I, I will wait, I will wait for the regular speaking, do that. But I wanna commend you on destroying, and I see Russ is here tonight, you destroyed a police department. Now, you were commenting last week on, on a video about how we're gonna have sergeants here and detectives and everything else. What about the police department you destroyed? How's that work? How, how's that, well, you can answer me at the end. And why, why didn't Upper Yoder in two years never answer a legitimate police complaint? Why did you ignore police documents created by John Blake and, and, and Lotny and do nothing? Why did that, why don't you answer that? Now, what are you gonna do from here on? Are you gonna answer this? Are we gonna have a complaint system where when cops screw up? Or does Ed talk out of his act? How does this?
That will go to the West Hills.
Are you gonna be on the commission?
I don't know, that'll be up to the five people here, sitting here when, after the.
So the people have no place on this? Right? Of course not, okay. I'll talk to them later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, let's move on. I finished business, we have ordinance number two ninety-two. Police services from November eleventh to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. It's listed here, it'll be available. Do I have a motion to?
Who makes the motion, we accept the ordinance? I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Those, I'd like a roll call, those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, thank you. Under new business? Uh, we don't have any new business, other than as of the December. November twentieth meeting, at that time, we will um, vote to accept the resignation of Paul. It was entered into, so we would like to ask if there are anybody, is there anybody in the public that would like to send a letter of interest, just as Joe did, to become a supervisor? Correspondents? Yes. Under correspondence, just this morning, um, we received two more emails of two more candidates that are interested in becoming supervisors.
Okay. How many is that total?
Uh, well, what was before, I think about five now. Okay, good, thank you. Good to hear that. Okay, now we have public participation. Again, there's a time limit of three minutes, out of respect to the fact that there are people here that have jobs. And this is now time to start.
Wanna go first Dave?
Yeah, I'll go sir.
Okay. Karen. Let's speak.
Karen Hill, Upper Yoder. Um, so a couple of concerns. My first concern is, um, what is the length of time that you put notification for special meetings when you notify the public?
Okay, we follow the sunshine laws, could you give?
You have to have at least twenty-four hours notice.
Is that twenty-four business hours? Just twenty-four hours? Okay. And then, um, so when the public hears that a person on the board is resigning, um, so that's the first time the public hears about it, how much time, um, do you get or do you give to, um, to the public to say, okay, we'll review, we'll take in letters of interest or, you know, to take over the position? How much time?
Okay, in the past, it's always been, and it's required by police events, that we accept, the letter is sent and it's dated. But we are not permitted to accept it until there's a public meeting. We're not accepting it today. We're accepting, we have thirty days to fill it. And if we don't fill it, then there's another fifteen days where the vacancy board, which is an appointed person, Donna Caulfield, would fill the position and work with us on that. It's not, that's the process.
Alright, so at a meeting, you tell us that somebody on the board resigns.
No, we're not gonna tell you, we're gonna accept it.
Right, so you accept it. You accept the resignation. So is that when the, the clock starts ticking? So, how does, how do you folks accept a resignation and then in the same breath say, hey, we filled the position? How do you do that?
Ask these people, I, I knew about it fifteen minutes before the meeting, so you'll have to.
How is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
Well, how, what?
It's acceptable by the state, it's acceptable.
By what?
It doesn't have to be, there's no, there's no public vote on it. It could, that's how it's done. We review the candidates that come in and we look at them and decide to pick somebody. We can do that, you can do it at the same meeting. It doesn't have to be a public forum.
So, uh, so what you're saying is that anybody can send in a letter of interest at any point in time during the year? So you're gonna keep it on file, so if there's an opening, this?
That's correct.
Then you pick from the letters.
That's correct.
That's my question, thank you.
You have to be the registered voter.
Yes.
With it for twelve, you have to.
Yeah, yeah, that, you have to resign.
You have to be a resident of the township for one year prior to. Not a registered voter. You do have to.
Yes, you do, you have to be a registered voter.
Okay, okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to speak for a moment too, again, thank you. I'm John Clanchar. Southmont, um, I have a timer here on my, I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll look here, okay? I got fifteen thirty-one on my timer, okay? I'll speak, I'll stop at eighteen thirty-one, someone wants to watch that for me, okay? So, I get it, you know, I, I get it. You guys are pretty frustrated with me coming in here cursing and swearing every effing month, every, just, just pounding on you, pounding on you, pounding on you, right? You can't stand it, you just want me to shut up, right? Imagine how I felt when my truck got towed. Imagine how I felt, okay? Those are actual constitutional rights violations, okay? That you guys thought you could bend me over that counter and butt fuck me. Shove up my ass. Okay, seriously, that's how I feel about it, okay? Ed threw me out of a meeting for not standing up for the pledge of allegiance with says liberty and justice for all. Do I get liberty and justice in Upper Yoder Township, really do I? When, when, what, what was his name, uh, Bob Shaheed said to me, you don't like it, stay out of Upper Yoder Township? Okay? I said to Ed fifty times, look, just say I'm sorry. Apologize to me, put on a public, a public statement, okay? On the minutes, look, I'm sorry I had you arrested, okay? And I'll withdraw that lawsuit. But he's so fucking stubborn and so bullheaded that he won't do it. He's sitting there so smug, look at him right now.
I'll never apologize to you.
Well then, I'll, I'll take.
He'll freeze over before I apologize to you or anything.
Hey Ed, hey Ed, Ed, I'll take your house. Okay?
Okay.
You better get, anybody know good a Fraser? You can ask him, he, hey, he, he's the insurance liaison. He's the one that gets Cyan a law, he's the one, he's the MOP or whatever insurance guy, okay? He's the guy right there. All right? I just, why are my rights? I have a question for everybody, why don't my rights matter? Why don't my rights count? Why does he have the right? Why can't you guys compel him? He officially, representing your board, had me arrested for not standing up for the pledge of allegiance after you guys put an ordinance in that I was trying to follow, not to move around when I had a camera going. Okay, I was trying to follow the rules and I got arrested for following, for trying to follow the rules. Let's be real about that. Okay, I know, Paul, it's just, hey, you're almost done, you don't have to, this is probably the last time you're gonna have to hear me bitch. Because you wouldn't do anything about it for how many fucking years? Okay? You guys need to do better, okay? Well, Joe is, Joe was appointed, so he wasn't elected by the people, neither was Bob, okay? And Brett won, so is he gonna quit his job as a detective? Because he can't hold that position. He can't hold this, an elected position as a county detective because he has jurisdiction as a cop over this, over this municipality. Okay? We're gonna go there. I'm gonna keep, until you guys do your jobs right and stop violating people's rights and make people's rights more important than your fucking bullshit decorum or somebody coming up here cursing and swearing, okay? I'm not going away. You guys will not as well start writing up the charges again, okay? That I beat every time. Okay? Like, I'm sorry that I, I'm, Ed, I'll apologize to you that I, that I pissed you off so badly. Okay? That you had me arrested. Okay, that's my part of it, but you know what? I have the right to do, I have the constitutional rights to do what I wanted to do, okay? And I'm gonna continue to do that. And if it bothers you too bad, because it bothers me because of my rights, stomp your foot, Ed. Okay? You wanna handle like men, we can go somewhere and handle like men.
John.
You want to? Or you want?
John, John.
You want to?
Please check your call.
Okay, okay.
Please check your call.
And we're good.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Can athletes speak?
Yes you may.
Thank you. Hey, first of all, I'm trying to keep this brainless, this Polack, shut him up. And take a look, he won't come out in public again. And Bob, I appreciate what you're doing, but why don't you stand up for me when Blake mishandled, why did you stand up for me when he comes in here? I read your calling records and, you can sit here and lie. Paul, I commend you. You've finally done something adult. You quit, you resigned, you piece of shit. You've done nothing. You lied about my records, you cover up Blake misconduct. None of you. And Sue admitted today, oh, I didn't know Joe got appointed, it was a surprise to me too. What slimy, slimy backwork, backroom underhanded deals? Oh, it just happened, oh wow. But I know Joe and Bob are good friends, so that's how it works here, nobody will stand up for the residents. My resignation, I'll tell you what. You get him to leave tonight, oh, Paul, you know what? You're such a pathetic piece of shit. Hey, Ed told me, you got fired from the county health system for inappropriate conduct? Is that right? Talk to Ed about it, he told me. But anyhow, I, I just wondered, why?
I love how they look all confused when they, when they catch them in the lawn.
He looks like a deer in the headlights when he walks out of the house. Sue, I will leave tonight, I will never come back here in another meeting. Have him tell tonight that he lied about my police records, that he covered up Blake misconduct. Come on, Paul, tell the truth. You wanna see the records, I offered them to everybody, no one wants to do. Ed sits there and pretends like he's your friend, then all of a sudden, you know, turns around and he sticks it to two of the greatest cops we ever had, Don Wire and Todd Miller. That's okay. Um, you know what? In the end, Ed, you only got twenty-eight votes for him. You're, you're hanging on by the skin of your teeth, Bob, he lost. And I'm gonna be here torturing you people until you're accountable for everything you do. All I wanted to do was have a nine one one call answered, didn't happen. Didn't happen. And this brainless piece of crap up here, he go, oh, Paul, happy anniversary. So, let's see, November twenty-seventh, one forty-two in the afternoon, Camry County Courthouse, he's up there looking at Lotny, he's here, he's going at him with the body, they're laughing. Prosecutor comes over once, he says, oh, you're in trouble. Second time prosecutor's over, the piece of shit Lake, um, ex-cop clown Lotny and police liquor Paul Peoli walk of shame out of the courtroom. Then Paul, I, I call Ed and I said, Ed, why was he up in the courtroom? Ed goes, he shouldn't be there, I said, I know that. Couple of days later, Ed calls me and he says, you know, he just called the township to see how the boys made out. He didn't want anybody to know he was up there, so I had to bring it up in December. But you know what? I got so much meat on you guys. Thank you for now, I'll see you next week. Have a great week. Bye Ed.
We do not need to go into executive session.
I do want.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
I just wanna say, um, obviously passing the, the police consolidation. As you know, a million years ago, I was here and tried to do this, you know, this was twenty-five, thirty years ago. And basically got, you know, frogmarched out of Westmont at the time. Um, I'm glad it finally happened. It's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing, so I appreciate, I know the board, the four of you have done a lot of work to make it happen. And, you know what, thank you for that work. Because it's been, it's been a long haul and I'm glad we got there.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Sue's done a lot of work, these other four haven't. Let's get that straight.
You're right, John, we haven't done a thing.
I seen you at one police commission meeting, Ed, Rob, Bob, I seen you at one.
Please, please save him, please. Okay. Like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Meeting's over? Meeting's over? It's over? Okay, good. Ed, I don't know how old you are when that bad hit, but you really wanna talk, you really, you really think you can kick my ass? Come at me. Okay? We can handle this like men. Okay? Come on, motherfucker! Come on, you really, come on! You really think you can? Do you really think you can, Ed? You really think so? Put your money where your mouth is. You don't need to talk to anybody. Put your money where your mouth is, I'm, that's not a threat, I'm asking you. You think you can? There's no fence around me, old man. It's that attitude why I am the way I am. Okay? That's why. People wanna know, that's fucking why. I'm standing right here, do something about it. You fucking punk. Well, I figured that out.
I hate him. I hate him.
You know, you know what I can't stand either, I'm gonna say it, because I haven't had all my fucking coffee. I can't stand that the media doesn't bother covering. They, they, they covered that, oh, the police are good and the government's good.
You got, you got in that man's face, Don's face, he's a member of the public. You addressed the council, not the public.
Hey Russ.
Yeah, what?
I'll do what I want, okay?
Fine, dude. And I'll do what I want.
And you don't, you don't.
I don't wanna give you any press, if I do give you press, I'll, I'll say exactly what you do at the meetings.
Okay, it's bad, right?
I don't have time for that shit though.
Right? You don't wanna, you don't wanna report how, 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 how I sue him for money, right? That doesn't matter, that's not, that doesn't get reported. It doesn't get reported. Fifteen grand, twenty-five grand, you don't report that shit, Russ, it's slanted. Okay? Yeah, I'll scream at a man, he's got the right to. It's not illegal. Fuck him. Fuck, you know what, fuck Dan Zagresek, okay? Does Russ, does Russ know the history of Dan Zagresek, how he used to come over to my uncle's house, bust in and fucking try and threaten my own, threaten arrest my old man? Does he know that?
Sue admitted today, yeah. Oh, I was as surprised at you when Joe.
She used the word fuck.
Yeah.
She used the word fuck, did everybody hear it? I'll be damned if I ever fucking censor myself again.
I wanna, I wanna commend you on something. I've never seen Special Ed, the blick, bricklicker, get so wound up. He should put that much effort into residence of the township. Ed, why didn't you try supporting the township people? An appointed Bob, Bob bobblehead. I, I, I know nothing about Joe, I got nothing to say about him. I, I, I know nothing about Joe, I got nothing to say about him. But I'll tell you what. Paul Peoli leaving, that's the only adult thing Uncle Fester did.
Wait, wait, do, do you think I'm gonna get a harassment and disorderly conduct for, did, did I threaten him at all?